It is 5:30 PM and we are in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we get roll call, please?
McCambo.
Here.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Graham Murray.
Here.
Okay. Now, before we get to the consent agenda, we just have some people that we want to recognize tonight. Everybody knows of the fire that we had not too long ago and things could have really turned south. And we were just blessed that we got everything taken care of, but we couldn't have done it without the help from our friends. And we want to recognize our friends tonight. We want to give a quick shout out to Martinis, Elks, Subway, The Bistro, Latte Bola, Safety Town, Tastefully Yours, Bean Counter Coffee, Waken Bake, Ivy, Ivy Bake Shop, Local Auxiliary, Olive Wine, Tim Lungren, Denise, Mac Holes. I probably said that wrong. I'm a name butcher sometimes. Brad Cahill, Dr. Gao, Terry Abres, MDA Gillian Harper, Ryan Nelson, Superior Ambulance. And I believe that's...I believe that's it. If I didn't say Tastefully Yours and Safety Town, I'm saying it now. And them as well. So I just want to say thank you for just all your great help, for bringing things down to the firemen as they were working on the fire. Just everybody participating in that, it was truly appreciated, so we want to say thank you for that. But we want to recognize the people that knows the time when there's a fire, most people run away from it, and we have some men that, ladies and gentlemen, that actually run into it. And we want to recognize them tonight. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank the firefighters of the City of Danville for their assistance, resilience, and expertise in fighting the Tama building fire on Saturday, August 4th, 2018. Your courageous efforts, exceptional performance, and commitment to your community helped make Burlington and Des Moines County a great place to live, work, and play. On August 20th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to the City of Danville Fire Department. Have a representative from the City of Danville. All right. Would you have a word to say, please? Let me say, I do most of my work with my hands. All right. All right. Next, we have...even though these say the same thing, didn't want to show any partiality, I'm going to read through them all the same because they're deserving of it. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank the firefighters of the City of Fort Madison for their assistance, resilience, and expertise in fighting the Tama building fire on Saturday, August 4th, 2018. Your courageous efforts, exceptional performance, and commitment to your community helped make Burlington, Des Moines County, and Lee County a great place to live, work, and play. On August 20th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to the City of Fort Madison Fire Department. It's been a long drive. Thanks for coming all the way up. The firefighters, that's how they roll.
I think we just heard it's a long gone.
All right. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank the firefighters of the City of Minneapolis for their assistance, resilience, and expertise in fighting the Tama building fire on Saturday, August 4th, 2018. Your courageous efforts, exceptional performance, and commitment to your community helped make Burlington and Des Moines County a great place to live, work, and play. On August 20th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to the City of Minneapolis Fire Department. Have a representative here, too. We certainly appreciate you guys. Gentlemen, have a word? Please. Can I have you come to the podium so that way they can hear you, the microphone? Sorry about that.
Anytime you want us to play, just call us.
And really, I'll tell you, this is just a little Mayor's Award. I wish we could give you guys so much more. We truly, truly appreciate all the help. That's from the bottom. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank the firefighters of the City of Mount Pleasant for their assistance, resilience, and expertise in fighting the Tama building fire on Saturday, August 4th, 2018. Your courageous efforts, exceptional performance, and commitment to your community helped make Burlington, Des Moines County, and Henry County a great place to live, work, and play. On August 20th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to the City of Mount Pleasant Fire Department. Come on down. Thank you, sir. Sir, I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. This is really going to bring you guys down, but I'm sorry. I wish the mayor was prettier. These guys are awesome, man, I'm telling you. All right.
Few words, a lot of action.
There you go. There you go. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank the firefighters of the City of West Burlington for their assistance, resilience, and expertise in fighting the Tama building fire on Saturday, August 4th, 2018. Your courageous efforts, exceptional performance, and commitment to your community helped make Burlington and Des Moines County a great place to live, work, and play. On August 20th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to the City of West Burlington Fire Department. Gentlemen?
I'd like to just take a moment to thank all the firefighters that were there and the citizens that came out to help us, either by being there physically or coming and posting on Facebook their support for everything we did. But I'd also like...I think that being left out is our families. A lot of us had to leave our families, so I want to also recognize them for their support allowing us to do what we can do. Thank you.
Sean, how do you know? I wasn't going to say something about families. I thought that was rude of you, Sean.
Your son was there all night.
Was he? All right. Okay, we've got one last one, and we'll let you guys get on that here. But again, we thank you so much for coming down. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank the firefighters of the City of Burlington for their assistance, resilience, and expertise in fighting the Tama building fire on Saturday, August 4th, 2018. Your courageous efforts, exceptional performance, and commitment to your community helped make Burlington and Des Moines County a great place to live, work, and play. On August 20th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to the City of Burlington Fire Department.
They're waving the chief off. So I just wanted to say, as a city...there's no fire department in this region that can handle every emergency on their own. So we're lucky that we have a lot of good mutual aid partners out there. You know, we sign agreements with, of course, the real close neighbors, but when you sign an agreement with Mount Pleasant or Fort Madison, you think, yeah, we're probably not going to call them. And I know I talked to the chief, Mount Pleasant, Chief Kenny, about, hey, have you ever been to Burlington? Because as long as I've been here, no. And he said, yes. He remembers coming to Burlington. So I've been here 21 years. Not sure how long you've been the chief over there. Thirty-something years. So, you know, so we're blessed to have those people coming here. And in the mutual aid agreement, there's a little caveat down there, you know, it says, you don't have to do this. Like, if we call, you can turn us down. I can't remember anybody ever saying, we're not coming, or we're not sending our ladder truck, you know, 30 miles down the road out of our city to cover you and leave our city unprotected, you know? So I really appreciate that from our neighbors. They really helped us out, so thanks a lot. And could we maybe get a group picture of everybody?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Let's do this. Everybody, come on back up again if you don't mind. If you don't mind.
I guess everyone just kind of stagger.
Someone take charge here.
I was going to put them all here.
Everybody scooch in.
Is that right? Do you want me to call them back?
Yes.
All right, we thank you for your patience. Let's roll. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims. We have beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have six resolutions. First is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2018 parking lot improvements, Main Street, and Valley Street Lot. The third is a resolution approving purchase of a single axle dump truck for Public Works, Street, and Sewer Division. The fourth is a resolution approving an agreement with Midwest Truck Advertising for professional advertising services on city buses. The fifth is a resolution approving inter-local agreement between the City of Burlington and Des Moines County for the 2018 Bernie Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG Program Award. And the sixth one is a resolution canceling Dankwart Park pool agreements. And we also have public hearings set for September 4th for consideration of an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 105, Garbage and Solid Waste, and Chapter 106, Collection of Solid Waste of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? I see none. Counsel?
I motion to approve all...I motion to approve all listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay, this is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 311 South 9th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tinsley?
So the city acquires properties through their abandoning building program. These properties are generally acquired because former owners do not take care of them or abandoning them. They're vacant or unmaintained, so they do need work done prior to occupancy of the home or other conditions as may apply. So we're going to go through those conditions. I guess I would like to state, we have three properties for sale tonight. Upon conclusion of the sale of those three properties, we'd ask the winning bidders, if there's three, to meet with our code inspector, Larry Caston, on the first floor, just to go over the details on how to transfer the property and meet with him down on the first floor in his office so that they can make sure they have everything and know everything how to proceed with that. The first one is 311 South 9th Street. That is on 9th Street between Maple and Elm Street, is a single-family house. So it's a one-bedroom, or one-story, two-bedroom, one-bath, 100-by-40-foot lot. Does need quite a bit of work, as most of our houses do. That work is required to be completed or substantially complete prior to occupancy of the home and prior to transfer of the deed. The conditions for sale of this property, the house shall be rehabbed to housing occupancy standards or demolished as required and combined with an adjacent lot under the ownership of the purchaser. If it is rehabbed, defective items shall be repaired as needed. Licensed plumber and electrician shall inspect and sign off that such items in the property meet or are brought up to city code standards. Off-street parking shall accommodate two vehicles on the property. Sidewalks along 9th Street and parking areas shall be improved as necessary. All permits shall be received and codes met as applicable for work or occupancy of the home or demolition. Purchaser shall maintain the property and yard and hold insurance on the property upon approval of sale by the City Council. Timing for it, if it is rehabbed, work shall be started within 60 days, shall be completed within 180 days of approval by the City Council, and extension of 180 days may be granted if significant progress is made. Should the property be demolished and combined with an adjacent property, it shall be completed within 90 days of purchase with an extension of 60 days granted with significant progress made on the process. Failure to meet the timeframes may result in the forfeiture of sale and purchase with resale of the property by the city. Again, the deed is transferred to the purchaser upon substantial completion of renovation or demolition work as listed. Currently, on this property, we had two previously submitted bids, Patrick Smith of Central Avenue $500 and Mohammed Narouzi, Bittersweet, of $500. Purchaser is required to pay minimum 500 or 10% down, whichever is greater, upon approval of sale. And then the entire amount shall be paid within 30 days of approval of sale by the City Council. And then, again, the timeframes for rehab or demolition apply.
Okay, if there's anybody else that wants to put in a bid and your name is not on the paper when you're...when we open up the bidding, make sure you come to the podium, to the lectern. That's why I said, call in a podium.
Sorry.
To the lectern, and give us your name and address and your bid. So we have the bidding at $500. We have a bid from Patrick Smith and Mohammed Narouzi at $500. Do I have a bid at $600?
Kevin Carter, $1,600 value. I'll bid $700.
Did you say seven?
Yeah, seven.
$700 for Mr. Kerr?
Patrick Smith, 1303 South Central, I go $1,600.
$1,600. Mr. Smith?
Nathan Williams on behalf of Harmony Bible Church, 450 Divisions, 500 Division Street, I believe it is.
What is that, 500 Divisions?
Yes. 2,000.
It's going to be a party tonight. Good.
You don't get to keep it.
That's right. I'm a bid of 2,000. Do I have a higher bid?
21.
21. Mr. Smith? Do I have a bid of 22? Now that we got you, we'll just...yeah, I'm not going to have you guys keep getting it every time. Already got you on the paper. So just give me your hand. We've got 22 for Mr. Williams. Do I have a bid of 23? Do I have a bid of 23? I have $2,200 for Mr. Williams. Any other bids?
Don Harder, 1018 Monticello, 25.
What was that? Two...what was that?
1018 Monticello.
And what was that bid again, Don? Thanks, Phillips. I appreciate it. Bless you. Bless you. We've got a bid of $2,500. Do I have a bid of $3,000? Got a bid of $2,500. Do I have a bid of 26? Got 26, Mr. Williams? Have a bid of 27? $3,000. $3,000, bid by Mr. Harder. 31, Mr. Williams? We have bid at 31 for Mr. Williams? Do I have a bid of 32? Mr. Harder? 32? 32's the high bid. 33? For Mr. Williams? Do I have a bid of 34?
35.
35? 35 with Mr. Harder. 36? 36, Mr. Williams?
37.
37, Mr. Harder? 38, Mr. Williams?
9.
39, Mr. Harder? $4,000, Mr. Williams?
Harder, a bit of church.
I know, right?
I thought they'd bring the Lord into it. I thought they'd bring the Lord into this. We've got a bid at...we've got a bid at $4,000. Sorry, Don, that was hilarious. Huh? We're going to need some potato chips. We'll talk after the meeting. Anyways, we have a bid of $4,000, Mr. Williams? Going once? Going twice? Sold to Nathan Williams on behalf of Harmony Bible. For $4,000. And a bag of chips. Okay, let's...
Okay, so I motion to close.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
You're going to have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 311 South 9th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
I have now an amendment? Yes? To amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 311 South 9th Street of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Nathan Williams with Harmony Church at 550 Jeffery Division Street, Burlington, Iowa, to the amount of $4,000.
Could you second?
Second as amended.
Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
This is on the amendment. McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Okay. McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. One property down, but we still have two more to go.
Two more lovely homes.
Okay. At this time, for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1906 Melvin Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tinsley?
This property, again, 1906 Melvin, on the east side of Melvin Avenue, just south of Lennox Drive there and north of the Burlington Northern Railroad tracks. This is a manufactured home or mobile home, two-bedroom, one-bath. It's on 100-by-120-foot lot, which is more significant than the actual home. One of the conditions of this sale is that the existing structure is required to be demolished as required. Within 90 days of approval of purchase by the city, an extension of 60 days may be granted if progress is made. New construction on the property shall commence by May 1st, 2019, and shall include a single-family residence, meeting current code requirements, including building and zoning code requirements. All permits shall be received and codes shall be met as applicable for work and occupancy of the home. Purchaser shall maintain the property and yard and hold insurance upon the property upon approval of sale by the city. Failure to meet timeframes may result in forfeiture of sale and purchase with resale by the city. The deed, quick lane deed, shall be transferred to purchaser upon approval and payment of a building permit. So this does require that structure be demolished regardless of who purchases it and a new home be constructed on it, starting by next May 1st, 2019. Currently, we have one bid for this property in the amount of $500 from Tim Steele.
Okay. Same rules apply, guys. If your name is not on this paper, if your name is not Tim Steele, and you want to put a bid on this, we're going to ask for your first initial bid to come to the lectern and give us your name, address, and your bid. And then from that point on, we'll let you remain in your seats, and we'll just take a hand. So we have a $500 bid. Let's open up the bidding.
I'm representing for 713 Properties LLC, 718 Jefferson Street. I'm going to do $600.
What was the LLC again?
713 Properties.
Okay.
What was the address?
718 Jefferson.
Okay. We've got a high bid of $600. Do I have a bid of 7?
Tim Steele, 700.
Okay, now I know who you are. You can just give me your hand, and we can go from there. We have a high bid of 700. Do I have a bid of 8? Have a bid of 800 to 713 Properties. Have a bid of 800. Do I have a bid of 9? 900 for Mr. Steele. 1,000 for 713. 1,100 for Mr. Steele. 1,200 from 713. Where was I at? 1,800? 1,300 for Mr. Steele? 14 for 713 Properties. Do I have a bid of 15? Bid of 15 for Mr. Steele. We can hang for a second. We want to make sure we do this right. We have a 16? 17? Bring that phone up here. Let me talk to them. I'm the mayor down here, not Shane. We've got a...we've got a bid of...we've got a bid of 17, Mr. Steele? Okay. We've got a bid of 1,700, Mr. Steele. Any other bids? Going once? Going twice? Okay. It is sold to Tim Steele for 1,700. Can I get a motion to close it up?
Yes, I motion to close.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1906 Melvin Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
I need a second.
A second.
Thank you.
And I would like to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1906 Melvin Avenue, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Tim Steele, PO Box 84, Burlington, Iowa, in the amount of $1,700.
Second. Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
McCambo?
Aye.
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
McCamell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Steele. Brings us to number three. This is gonna make somebody a lovely home. Uh, this is time for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1,003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland?
Hey Shane, real quick, before you start that, I'm gonna, uh, bow out here, I'm losing reception, so...
Okay.
Thank you for calling in, counsel. All right, thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.
This property is located 1,003 Chalfont, uh, just on the west side of Chalfont, south of Mount Pleasant, north of Lucas Avenue. It is a long, narrow lot. Is a one-story home, three-bedroom, one full bath, on a 35 by 309-foot lot. Again, uh, needs, uh, plumbing, electrical, clean-out, a lot of work, uh, on the property in order to occupy, uh, property. So all that would have to be done prior to occupancy. If rehab defective items shall be repaired as needed, licensed plumber or electrician shall inspect and sign off that, uh, such items are, meet or are brought up to city code. Uh, off-street parking shall, uh, be improved to meet current code standards as necessary. A permit shall be received and codes met as applicable for work or occupancy of the home. Uh, again, purchaser shall maintain property and yard and hold insurance on the property upon approval of sale by the city. For rehab, work shall be initiated within 60 days. Uh, should the property be rehabbed, it shall be completed within 180 days of approval by the city council. Extension of 180 days may be granted if progress is made. Uh, should it be demolished, it shall be completed within 90 days of approval of purchase with an extension of 60 days, uh, may be granted by, if, uh, progress is made. Failure to meet timeframes may result in forfeiture of sale and purchase with resale by the city. Deed shall be transferred upon substantial completion of renovation or demolition work as required. This property, uh, currently have, uh, one bid, the amount of $500, from Patrick Smith of 1,303 South Central.
Man, Patrick keeps coming down. Maybe this is his night. See how it goes. All right, um, we're gonna open the bidding. I'll leave the rules as I did before. If you are not listed, if you haven't put a bid in, we're asking for the first time you come to the lectern and, uh, put your bid in, give us your address, and we will move through this expeditiously. So we have a high bid of $500 from Patrick Smith. Do I have a bid of 600?
Penny Doppler, 1,005 Chalfont Street, a bid of 600.
Okay. I have a high bid of 600? 7? I have a thousand from Pat- Mr. Smith? Do I have 1,100?
1,100.
1,100 from, from the Dopplers? 1,200, Mr.?
15.
15, Mr. Smith?
16.
16?
18.
18, Mr. Smith?
19.
19? 2,000, Mr. Smith?
21.
21? 22, Mr. Smith?
23.
I have 23 from the Dopplers? 23? Going once? It's gonna make somebody a lovely home. You can live right next to the Dopplers. Okay, so Dopplers want to live next to the Dopplers. Now I see. Okay, we have 23 going once? Going twice?
Ooh.
Oh.
Surprise.
Sorry, everybody's time.
D J Arbaba? 2127 South Main?
Can you spell that last name for me?
A-R-B-A-B-H-A.
Arbaba?
Yes.
Okay. And what's your address?
2127 South Main.
And we have a high bid from the Dopplers at 23?
I'd go 2,400.
Have a bid of 24? We have a bid of 25? 26, a bid of 26?
27.
A bid of 27?
3,000.
3,000?
31.
31 with the Dopplers?
3200.
Have a bid of 3200? With Mr. Arbaba? Bid of 3200?
33.
The Dopplers are raised with 33, do I have a bid of 34?
3500.
3,500, Mr. Arbaba? Okay. Have a bid of 3,500? Going once? Going twice? You're gonna kick yourself later for this.
Oh!
It was like simultaneously.
She put her hand up, I saw her for that.
Man, I try not to go against the gavel, but that was pretty close. Have a bid of 36?
Yeah, she was right next to us. You'd be my neighbor.
It's about to get ugly. Pause that for a minute, Stan. We've got a bid at 36, we've got a bid at 36 with the Dopplers. Mr. Arbaba?
37.
Have a bid of 3,700, Mr. Arbaba? Have a bid of 38? Going once? Going twice? Gavel's speaking. The gavel has spoke. Man, this has been exciting tonight, you guys are awesome. Can I get a motion to close?
I motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen?
McCamell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
I would like to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street.
Hold on a second.
You go downstairs, yes.
Thank you, Arbaba.
Thank you. To amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Jala Arbaba of 2127 South Main in the amount of $3,700.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Hold on a second. Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
McCamell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
McCamell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Well done, well done. That was exciting, wasn't it, guys? Mary, I know you enjoyed it, right? Okay, number four. This is time for consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 3129, being an ordinance created the D-Wall Plaza PUD Plan Unit Development by making changes to Section 3B Land Use Design Criteria and Section 5, 50-foot Buffer Park. Mr. Tisland?
This map here shows the area of the D-Wall PUD, uh, includes properties between Roosevelt on either side of Lawrence, Southwest Avenue, and then, uh, south of Mason Road. It has been expanded over, uh, the last few years to include additional property, um, and has had, uh, some amendments over the years as well. Um, the current requested amendment, um, from the property developer, uh, Mike Pearson, is, uh, to change land use design criteria such at Lot 7, uh, which is, uh, highlighted here at the bottom, uh, southeast corner, uh, in red there on Mason Road. East of Sequoia is, uh, use of Lot 7 of Stonegate Crossing shall also be allowed as residential, including multifamily residential. Such lots shall follow all bulk regulations of, for our 4 district unless otherwise required. And then, uh, for 50-foot Buffer Park, uh, currently, there's a required 50-foot Buffer Park on the backside of the properties on the east side of Lawrence Avenue, uh, between those properties and, uh, adjacent residential properties to the east, uh, such as, uh, on the backside of the Fairway Food Store, there's a Buffer Park there. So this would extend, uh, if this Lot 7's developed as residential, that there be a Buffer Park between that and, uh, potential commercial development here on the west side of it. 30-foot Buffer Park, uh, 15 feet on either side of the property. Uh, that could be, uh, just bushes or landscaping, low, uh, landscaping, um, but just something to kinda buffer the parking lots and areas between residential and commercial. As mentioned, uh, this PUD has been, uh, previously amended in the past. Uh, one of the more recent amendments was the height restriction. Um, this area here on the south side of Mason Road has a 50-foot maximum height, uh, for all properties on the south side of Mason Road. Uh, this was in, after discussion based on the, uh, airport zone, airport there and their transitional zones, what their height restrictions are. Their height restriction goes up to over 100 feet, uh, at this line here, and 150 feet at this line here, and then 50 feet here. Uh, so the height restriction of the PUD is more restrictive than the airport height. And then, in this bottom corner here, it is spelled out that, uh, this, the height is 40 feet for the maximum in that area. Some of the information in the packet on, uh, the airport could, um, you talk on a little bit more, uh, references the, um, if I have that here? Iowa Airport Land Use Guidebook, um, using that as a criteria to, uh, look at what some compatible air, land uses are around the airport. Um, there is currently no, uh, zoning restrictions, uh, for, uh, this, other than what the zoning designation for the city is. Um, the area to the north is zoned residential right now, uh, R1 or R2, which is, uh, single-family as well as, uh, PUDs, um, uh, located just to the east of this. The Village Cooperative, uh, uh, three-story apartment building is to the east, and, um, R2 duplex, uh, Sunrise West condos there to the east as well. Uh, but the Airport Land Use Guidebook does reference, uh, what they see as compatible uses around airports. It also does state, um, that density can vary from airport to airport depending on the needs associated with communities and type of aircraft using, um, the airport. And local communities may wish to establish their own level of density. From a planning standpoint, uh, it makes sense to go from commercial to residential. Uh, that's kind of our, we have the zoning that leads from general commercial to limited commercial to multifamily residential, kind of that separation of uses, but also making sure that, uh, you're not jumping from heavy industrial to single-family residential. So this is a natural progression just from a zoning standpoint, uh, outside of the airport, uh, concerns.
Questions or concerns from the audience? Yes.
Good evening, Mary Beard, Southeast Air Regional Airport, Airport Director. And tonight I brought Andy Mason with me, he's the airport consultant for us and also a pilot. So, we just wanna talk to you a little bit about our concerns from the airport. Of course, it's about safety for the people in the air and on the ground. Um, that's probably our biggest concern. The next big concern is our grant dollars and the funding, how that is spun to the city, to the airport. We have a big project coming up here, it's about a $10 million project in 2020. So we really don't wanna do anything to jeopardize that funding, and, and that's where our concern comes from tonight, but I included a lot of information in your packets for you to review. Um, the grant assurances, that's, that's referring to this federal funding that comes our way. So those are concerns. And also, the Land Use Guide, it is a guidebook, as Eric said. We poured over the zoning for, that's in your zoning code, and obviously, there's concerns, there's some gray areas, some things that aren't quite into place. So rest assured that we are going to work on trying to update that, the mapping and all of that stuff that goes into that zoning. So we are not standing here, again, in the future, going through the same thing. We understand development, it's important for our community, but we also understand the importance of the airport and, and that we get done, the, the steps that need to be done. At the end of the day, there's this form called 7460 that I refer to. Uh, that, what that does, it goes to the FAA and they analyze all the surfaces around the airport. And it is a federal regulation, so it is a form that really does need to be filed before any development can happen that close to the airport. Actually, it's a two-mile radius of the airport. So we want to ensure that that happens with this development. We heard today that it was a 44-unit, four-story building, and that would, it's, it's just abutting the end of, or, our property, 1,000 feet from the end of the runway. So, um, I guess that's our ask tonight, is to ensure the 7460 get taken care of.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna have Andy go ahead and speak a little bit, I think you, you can do the technical stuff for me. So please go, Andy.
Yeah, yeah, no, normally, we see a, a proposed development, just file this online form through the FAA's website, and the FAA will then make a review, which usually takes about 60 to 90 days for them to analyze all this, these surfaces. And then, at that point, they'll issue a letter of termination, they call it, advising the airport how it'll affect their, their approach procedures. So, uh, during inclement weather, foggy weather, pilots rely on instruments to guide them in. You know, you just can't put, put the brakes on. And if, if the, if there's obstacles that encroach these imaginary surfaces, then it will raise the minimum. So what that means is, when the clouds are only 200 feet, that planes can get in currently, they might say, well, the, the, your minimums will be raised to 400 feet, so then the, the conditions need to improve. So what that means to the airport, a lot of, a lot of days, especially in the winter, planes might not be able to use this runway, uh, when the fog conditions settle. So, we just wanna ensure via this permit process that, uh, the airport's, um, approach procedures are not impacted negatively.
Do you guys have any other questions? Is this a, is this a four-story building that's going up there?
They had an ad in the newspaper, and so I called the phone number today, and that's where I got my information.
We haven't received any site plans or building plans to this point, so...
It's a real worth mentioning for the light?
Yeah, so, yeah, beyond the noise, obviously, there's noise, you know, impacts, um, and then there's, uh, what we call a, a runway light at the end of the runway to identify where the runway end is, and these are really bright strobing lights that are angled, they'll be angled towards that property at a, basically, extended center line at a 15-degree offset. So it could, there, there could be a light impact to those residents there.
But even if, even if this was a 20-story building for ants, you know what I'm saying? It still has to be underneath the, it still has to be underneath, uh, right. So I mean, that's, that still makes you, that still gives you concern?
So, so there are many surfaces that they analyze, the FAA analyzes, and we, and we, as we've talked about it, it's really one surface, we talk about part 77 surfaces. But this, when we file, if this form gets filed, they analyze all of those, and then they will still come back to us and say, maybe they're gonna say there is no obstruction, and, and we move forward. But the concern is, if they say there's an obstruction, then how do we mitigate that? So, that, I, should be part of that development process, and if we can head that off before somebody spends a bunch of money to build a building, that's, that's what we would like to do.
Yeah, I think there's two issues. One, the height issue that she's talking about, the obstacle potential, and then the other issue is the land use compatibility. So, I don't know if you guys have this map handy that was included in your packets, but, uh, the trapezoid off the end of the runway right here is referred to the runway protection zone. And the reason the FAA sizes these trapezoids at that dimensions is, they, they've done research on, uh, crashes, um, you know, so from a statistical standpoint, the probability of crashes will occur within this, this trapezoid off the end of the runway right here. So, from a, a multi-unit development potential, there's definitely a safety factor from a land use compatibility that needs to be considered here, too. So, that's why the Iowa DOT, in this case, recommends this not be compatible within the, uh, the, uh, the, the zone labeled Zone C right there, which is the gray color.
So state that once again, so I can understand.
Yeah.
The Iowa DOT?
They, they have recommendations for land use.
So they're not recommending this at this time?
They, they, their recommendation for residential within that color of what we've labeled C is not compatible.
Okay.
You know, there's flexibility, obviously it's a, it's a guide, but yeah, just, you know, high occupancy residences, you know, are just not ideal in these locations.
So I hear you saying it takes sixty to ninety days for them to review?
Correct.
Is there an, I mean, can we review it? And then if we're green light, go, then build, or we're doing it in reverse?
I believe the developer needs to go ahead and, and go ahead and file that. She indicated that there were plans available, so they can go onto this website and file that information, get that all going before they ever move forward. And I'm happy to help point them to whatever that is, but I think that would be awesome if they could move on that a little bit quicker.
It seemed to make sense to me instead of, you know, delaying flights because we, oopsie, got the horse ahead of the cart, cart ahead of the cor- you know what I'm trying to say?
Exactly.
Man, I'm sure we should have had this analysis done a long time ago, though. Is there, is there a reason why, why we didn't do analysis for around the, for that, or?
Well, okay, so in 2014, we, we had this very similar conversation, I think fourteen, fifteen, when we, when we put it into a PUD. So, so we were here, the airport authority was, was here, didn't bring an engineer at that point in time. The, the deal breaker here is it's residential, right? It's, it was previously zoned as commercial, like commercial, and now they're putting multifamily residential. So that's really what heightened that, the multifamily residential part of it.
Now, I was talking to Mary, you know, I've just, we recently just started working with Mary, but reviewing their ordinance and their compatibility plan, there's a lot of ambiguity that, you know, I think could be, you know, from a big picture, you know, looked at over, over time here and just to lay out a plan that could, you know, meet everyone's needs, both from the airport side and the development to keep the city, you know, with development growth.
You guys have any other questions?
I guess if we were to vote this down, what would, I guess the developer would have to go, I don't know, what would the next step be for the developer?
They wouldn't be able to develop as residential.
Right.
Yeah.
So how, what would the turnaround be for them to get this put back on the agenda?
For what?
For us to approve it again, to say if they've changed how they want to do it and maybe have more for us to see and as far as?
What do you want to see?
Well, first of all, excuse me, Andy, first of all, if we approve it as residential, then he has to get the building approved, right? So if, we could be talking single-story family homes. I wouldn't want to buy one with a light blinkin' Emmy, but he would still have to get his plans approved for a multi-unit. He can advertise all he wants, but he, the developer still has to comply and the city has to recommend. And the city staff is, is okay with the residential zoning?
From a zoning standpoint, it makes sense. It's this guidebook that says no residential. It also says no residential where the Village Cooperative is, where the Stonegate Apartments are. And we have a lot of residential in that area that are existing that have already been built in the last two years, five years, ten years. And the Stonegate Apartments are here in Zone B that is also not recommended. Village Cooperative is over here in Mason Meadows, Sunrise West. So it, it impacts quite a bit if we're saying no residential with, in this area. And I understand their concept, but there's hundreds of homes that are in this area. They're all under the height, or all our new ones are under the height restriction. I can't, I know there were some built quite a while ago that may be infringed upon that, but this is just down the street from Village Cooperative. That's in the same transition zone, that is a four, three and a half story apartment building that would be, I guess, right on, on this edge here. And then the Stonegate Apartments are all right here in Zone B that also the, is under the land use guidebook, not a recommended use, but again, it's a guidebook. It's not in our zoning code. We've talked to Mary about zoning, but getting to that point, we're creating a lot of nonconformities and how do we work through that? That's a lot of processes.
Do you have another preliminary plat that's in that same area or is it outside of it?
What's that?
The other preliminary plat you have, is it in that area or outside of it?
The?
The one, I just noticed it downstairs for?
That's just north of it, just, just a couple hundred feet to the north of that.
So I guess it would be making sure that we keep the airport's concerns about height restrictions, kind of, in future.
And that's why we, the airport height restrictions are well above at eighty to a hundred feet is their peak at Mason Road. We made a PUD amendment to make sure we're almost half underneath that, at that point. So the height restriction from, I guess, our standpoint, looking at what their maps are, and I'm not an airport engineer or anything, but looking at their maps and what, what's shown on their maps, we're well under the height restrictions. So that, there shouldn't be anything that goes above that just from a zoning standpoint. Granted, they have to fill out that same form to identify that, make sure they're pinpointing that, but from a zoning standpoint, we can't approve anything above fifty feet. And the height restriction in this area goes up to a hundred, this might not be exact, but it, it's a hundred feet at this point, a hundred feet at the yellow and red line there, so fifty feet is well underneath that. There shouldn't be an issue based on those height restrictions, but we want to make sure that's the case.
Okay. Just so we're all on the same?
Yeah, yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns from the audience?
I guess just back to that form and maybe Mary can state, like, the school did fill out that form and that apartment at the Village Cooperative did fill out that form as well. So there's people that, they are filling out that form in that area. We just want to make sure they are doing it our, aware before they start development. But we can't pass it on to, we can let the current owner of the property know, but we haven't had any contact with who's purchasing or developing that property to this point, so.
Just a reminder, this is the first of three readings, so you guys have time to get your information together. So you guys ready to?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen spoke.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of the ordinance amending ordinance number three-one-two-nine being an ordinance created, creating the DeWalt Plaza PUD land unit development by making changes to the Section 3B land use design criteria and Section 5, fifty-foot buffer park.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Next is consideration of a facility use agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, CISA, for the use of fields at the Burlington Regional Rexplex. Mr. Tisland?
This, we got comments back from CISA just late last week, or beginning of last week, just prior to the work session, forwarded those on to our attorney and had a chance to meet with CISA to, just this morning, based on those comments. Want to get those, that discussion back to our attorney to finalize the agreement and make sure we're all on the same page before we move this forward. So we'd recommend that we continue this item until the following meeting. Anticipate having a more final document for you to, that is agreeable to both sides or some alternatives for items that aren't quite agreed to, but at least have some written-out alternatives that you can discuss and have that at the work session. And they'll be present at the work session and the next council meeting, so. But we're just, based on their comments, we tried to make some rewrites and we're able to get it quite done in time.
We're going to get you, any comments or concerns from the audience?
This is the form that it's in, the five, five-year with an option to renew for five years, looks like that's, I mean, that's the, the structure that we're looking to move forward with. There are some questions that we needed to, that they had in regards to comp, what gets put forward and how it gets, how those contributions are counted, that we're still working through with them. The language that isn't included that came up at the council is on contribution towards electric costs that we need to get addressed within this contract. They know that we've talked with them about that.
Yeah, we've got that in there now.
There's some other language just in terms of, I think there's, the termination clauses that in here, they want, we wanted to make some adjustments on those. That kind of cover the, the changes from what's in the document?
Yeah, yep. The termination by cause, what that means, the lighting that they've, their discussion they're agreeable to paying that on a annual basis.
So the basics of what you have for a contract in here are, they're, they're fine from both sides, but there are details within those three sections that, that we need to get fleshed out still, to make sure that both parties are looking and reading this the same way.
Yeah, there's one other comment, just on maintenance, making sure we're clear on what our required maintenance is, what, what their damage may be, so.
Good. You guys satisfied?
Your Honor, I have a motion to continue the public hearing for consideration of the facility use agreement with the Southeast Iowa Soccer Academy for the use of fields of Burlington Regional Rexplex to the September 4th, 2018 city council meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen spoke.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rayker, I'm sorry, Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay. Now is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 97 Industrial Pretreatment Requirements of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Pitten?
The reason this amended ordinance, proposed amended ordinance is before you is we need to address two particular items covered by the ordinance. The Industrial Pretreatment Ordinance basically sets forth the criteria and the rules and regulations that we must follow to protect the wastewater treatment plant from the discharges of the collective users of the publicly owned treatment works, the wastewater treatment plant, collection system, lift stations, the workers, the processes at the plant. There's two areas that are addressed by this proposed amendment. One is something called local limits. Local limits is site-specific. It attempts to, to limit the total amount of any particular pollutant that would be contributed to the wastewater treatment facility so as not to harm the facility, the collection system, the workers, the facility itself, the biological processes that it won't pass through the processes and end up in the receiving stream, that it doesn't collect in the processed byproducts such as our biosalads and end up being applied on a farmer's field. So the local limits are site-specific. It looks at our collection system, it looks at our plant processes, and it, it was a study that was performed, an evaluation that was performed by a company called HR Green, our consultants. It was a condition of our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit that was issued on June 1st of 2015. We had to have an evaluation done by, oh, I'm sorry, it was issued on June 1st of 2016. We had to turn in the, an evaluation of local limits to the state, recognizing that we had made changes to the plant. The local limits that are in the current permit are in the current ordinance, have been in place since about 1982. A number of things have occurred at the wastewater plant through the years, as well as the methods of evaluating the impact of pollutants on processes over those thirty-plus years, the engineering, the studies that have been done. And so the study was done by HR Green and they came back with proposed new local limits to protect the current wastewater treatment facility. Now, if we were to make another change to the facility, such as the upcoming potential nutrient reduction processes, it would likely require a trigger, another evaluation of the local limits to determine whether they need to be tweaked more because of the changes of the plant that would occur with that nutrient reduction improvements. So these, this, one portion has the proposed local limit changes to protect the current And when we talk about local limits, again, we're talking about total contribution. We don't do much to control other than general prohibition of discharges from residences. We don't go into their homes, we don't pop manholes and look to see what this house is discharging to the city sewer system. We don't do that for just general commercial business offices. But we do have control over the industries. We have eight industries that make up our industrial pretreatment program in the City of Burlington. They're all what are referred to as categorical industries. The federal government has identified certain industries, certain processes that are used by those industries that have the potential to have an impact on the wastewater entering the wastewater plant. And they establish limits for those types of processes. And they require us as a pretreatment city to issue wastewater discharge permits to those. So we have permits with these categorical industries that contribute to us. And in light of the local, proposed local limits, we need to look at those industries, what limits we had on their discharges and tweak them accordingly to ensure that the contribution from those industries in combination with what comes from the commercial, what comes from the residences, don't exceed the total loading that this evaluation determined that our facility was able to handle safely without causing pass-through or injury or damaging the environment. So these limits are the result of the evaluation done by HR Green and have been reviewed by the state as being acceptable for us to incorporate into our ordinance and protect our facility. The other portion of the amendments are languages, phrases, terms that the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency had determined were necessary to tweak pretreatment regulations that they have on the books. They wanted cities to ensure that they had legal authority to regulate the industries. So basically, these are phrases and terms that US EPA has, over the years, determined should be incorporated into the control authority, which would be the City of Burlington's ordinances. And then we in turn would incorporate those changes into the permits that we have with our industries, making them aware that they must report to us this circumstance. They would be in violation of that particular thing. And so it's, again, it's words that are necessary for us to be in compliance with U.S. Environmental Protection Agency rules and regulations.
So done. Just to get a clarification, you didn't just get up, you just didn't wake up some morning and say, hey, we need to tweak these numbers? This was, this is the EPA that, that is?
It's a combination of both the State Department of Natural Resources and US EPA requiring us to make these adjustments to our ordinance.
So done, what if you were to tell them, nah, we don't want to make the adjustments?
Well, they have the ability to assess fines if we don't want to play by their rules.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear, so.
And they're ensuring that we have the ability to assess fines to our local industries if they don't play by our rules.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Do you guys, do you guys want to fast-track this? Do you guys want to bump this up?
Today's just the first reading.
First reading.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Let's just see if we wanted to, we have three readings on this, let's just.
We don't really have any choice.
Because it's interesting, I liked hearing, I like hearing Don.
I was just curious if you guys wanted to bump this up. That was, that was all I wanted to know.
Dawn should feel honored, because I don't think I've seen any reading, waived, waived two readings and only have the one hearing on it since I've been here. You are legally allowed to do that.
Oh, we are?
You are legally allowed to do that, but this, you have had a policy for I don't know how long that you will waive the final reading, but you won't, I've never seen you waive the second.
Well, just saying, I don't, I don't see.
You don't want to have to listen to Dawn again, I know.
I don't see this stopping, but anyways.
I would be opposed to that. Number one, I don't want special treatment. And number two, we did send letters to our industries that we regulate, and we explained to them that these changes were to be made, that do have some impact on them in tightening some of their limits, and I did tell them that the council would be addressing these proposed changes on this meeting and in the next meeting. I did indicate that it might possibly waive, the second reading might possibly be waived, but it potentially could go to a third meeting. So they are aware that those dates are there, and I would hope that we would go at least to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Fast-track to the second one.
Okay. You crazy kids, you good?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I have a motion to close.
Sorry.
Thank you. Kathleen.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance, rather, amending various sections of Chapter 97 industrial pre-treatment requirements of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Kathleen, speak.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay. Down to our last resolution.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of seventh addition to Stonegate Crossing subdivision.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tisland.
This is a one-lot subdivision, again, in the area we're discussing with the PUD amendment, located south of Mason Road, just to the east of Sequoia Drive Extended. This is about 4.16 acres, part of the Stonegate Crossing subdivision. This was previously approved as part of the preliminary plat of the sixth addition to Stonegate Crossing subdivision by the council in November 2016 and the planning commission in October 2016. This plat's one lot, no public infrastructure, there's a shared drive entrance, proposed lining up with Sequoia Drive. I guess regardless of the zoning, this is a legal lot or viable lot, whether the zoning is approved or not. I think their intention is to subdivide this in conjunction with the zoning, but if that, for some reason, does not go forward, it is still a lot that is planned as part of this development, so would recommend approval of it.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Good.
Okay, Kathleen, let's get her down.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay. This is time we'll receive comments from the audience. Is there anyone that has any comments tonight? Yes, sir.
Todd Darnold, 320 Valley Street, downtown Burlington. I'm here this evening, council members, to follow up on a letter that was sent to you and several staff members last week concerning the urgency to remove overhead power lines in the alleyway between Third and Fourth Streets. This alley is one of the only alleys in our downtown where the power lines have not been placed underground. This is most disturbing considering the amount of investment made and planned to be made in the near future. From what we have learned as a result of Tama complex fire, placing the power lines underground must be an immediate priority. As owners and developers of the McConnell Waus project, we are very concerned that by not addressing the overhead power lines, we would be putting our residents in a dangerous situation should a similar fire occur. Life safety issues must take priority. These power lines hinder fire trucks from accessing the alleyways and would prevent a ladder truck from performing a rescue from the upper stories of the building because of the overhead power lines. Residents on the alley side of the building could be potentially unable to escape a fire. We have heard far too many excuses in the past as to why this can't be done, but the reality is it must be done. We have an opportunity to correct a problem that faces our downtown and those properties and businesses that are located within it. We ask that the city council take the necessary actions to address the critical issue and work together with Alliant Energy to make such improvements to the infrastructure within our alleyway and help support the major investments that have been made and are being made within our downtown and consider all the issues that affect such infrastructure in regard to life safety. I just ask tonight that the council consider the letter that we sent and take the necessary steps to move forward to begin some remedy to get those lines buried. It's something that we started off fairly early in our project with probably only looking at our building, but realized as time has gone on, how much of an impact it actually has on the downtown, and as we saw with the fire at the Tama complex, it certainly could have ended up much worse. The lines that fell, you know, were very close to emergency personnel and also onlookers. For us, it made us realize there's other life safety issues that exist in terms of getting people out of the building. I don't know the, you know, exact issue that we'd be with the fire department, but as we've seen, there is no way to access the back of the building. So I think it brought some things to light, and hopefully we can learn from it. And I think that it definitely should be a priority for the city to get those lines buried.
Thank you, Mr. Darnold.
Thank you, guys.
Eric, you made contact with Alliant?
Yep, I've had contact with one of their managers, trying to set up a meeting this week with them, just sent them an email before this meeting to see if a date and time worked this week, so waiting back, waiting to hear back. They had a change, and I'd emailed someone a couple weeks ago and didn't get a response, and then followed up with another individual there and told us he, that individual no longer worked there, so that kind of explained the response, so I.
I talked to an individual that does work there, they're supposed to be getting us some numbers and stuff ready, that's what was supposed to be going down.
So we, so we had communication, trying to set something up this week to go over some details on that.
This isn't the only property owner that has expressed concerns in regards to development. Y&amp;J Properties is another building that is on that same alleyway and has some of the same concerns about how do they appropriately do renovations to the, to the structure when you have those lines in a way, and long-term, for ease of, of access to the building, it's, it is problematic. Be interesting to see what Alliant's numbers come back with.
If they really want to partner up.
They didn't initially express a desire to do the burying on their own, at their, at their cost, but they also didn't talk about what any actual numbers were going to, were for what the project cost would be to accomplish.
We appreciate the work.
Question, so it's their lines, right? Their, their lines, so it should be their cost.
The rest of the lines in the downtown area, as far as I know, that as they buried them, they have done it on their, at their, on their own dime, and I don't know what the difference has been in the other alleys as opposed to this one and why the, why this one has been left.
With construction or upgrades on their own lines, and they figured bury it then?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Alliant, why, why we would, we would have to participate in the cost if it's their line, so.
Yeah, maybe the mayor can make that thought known to somebody that he knows at Alliant.
See what kind of magic you got. Any other comments, concerns from the audience? I see none. Mr. Tisland?
We have a meeting coming up next week, the 28th, our final public meeting on our downtown area-wide, our Burlington area-wide plan, which is focused on the downtown, trying to go over kind of the final findings of the plan, again, some of our catalyst sites and recap of the entire plan, which is intended to implement redevelopment strategies for vacant or underutilized buildings in the city's downtown core. That is Tuesday, August 28th, at the Public Library at 5:30, probably till 7:30. Our consultants from Impact 7G and Confluence will be on hand as well. We have talked to the, through the Brownfield Grant about maybe transferring some money to look at or further study the Tama site as a redevelopment site, regardless of whether the owner goes forward or not, just to be able to do some planning on what some options are there, kind of just through this grant process. I know the owner obviously controls a lot of that process too, but being able to use some funds for looking at and getting more input for that as well.
Did you say Confluence was going to be there?
Confluence is our planning, architectural design consultants.
They're named Confluence, huh?
Confluence is.
A merger, so, all right, I got it.
That's the company's name, but encourage everyone to attend Tuesday, 5:30 at the library next week.
Good. Is it all you got?
Mm-hmm.
That's plenty. Mrs. Salisbury, any closing, parting shots? Okay, counselor?
Yes, there's light refreshment served, so I encourage you to get to that meeting.
Get some.
Get your say in. I was out to eat at a Burlington restaurant the other day, and somebody approached and said, there is a fight going on, and you need to make sure you get everyone involved in this fight, and I'm like, you know, trying to stir up drama, so I said, what fight is? And they said, the fight for Alzheimer's. So you guys want to make sure you dig deep in your pockets to help them out and get your shoes on and help, it's a walk, it's one mile, so I think, I think it's one mile. I apologize if I say that wrong, but it's a walk on October 13th at the Port of Burlington. So join the fight for Alzheimer's, and we probably all know everybody whose lives have been touched by that.
Who's putting this up?
I have to work with Shane, so we know, I'm just kidding.
It's all right, everybody understands. Who's putting that on?
Alzheimer's.
She forgets.
I don't know, it's.
It's the walk to end.
The walk to end Alzheimer's.
It's the Walk-in Alzheimer's Association.
All right, okay.
I'm the poster job.
Is it all you got, counselor?
It's all I got.
Okay. Counselor?
I'm, I'm good, thanks.
MPT?
No, just go out and enjoy all of what Burlington has to offer. We got the bees in town, farmer's market, some other things.
I second that. Gypsy's opened again downtown, Gypsy and Digger, so check it out, new and improved.
Except for when I weren't. I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Okay. Public Works Assistant City Manager, Nick McGregor.
You didn't get to hear from me tonight.
Huh?
I let Dawn take all my time tonight.
It was pleasant.
There's a lot of road construction going on right now, but the, one of the ones that I wanted to mention that's going to affect us pretty rapidly is Agency Street between Roosevelt and then Melrose Court is the extent of the project. But overnight, on Wednesday, Thursday, and then all we're allowing for Friday as well, we will close this section here, overhead, from 9:00 PM at night to 5:00 o'clock in the morning, so they can drop storm lines across the road.
This is Thursday?
What?
This is Thursday?
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday evening at 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And so they're going to be dropping storm lines across the road, so they can, they can do it the right way. There, you, there is a way you can do it, but it involves some, some collars, but it, it does allow over time for some water to seep in and then undermining of the roads. We'd like to do it the right way. Tried to choose a time later in the evening and with the contractor that made sense. So it shouldn't be a huge inconvenience, but we did draw a detour map on there to use the newly paved Flint Hills Drive in Shields.
Right on.
But that, just wanted to bring that attention to that, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Would appreciate local media's help getting the word out about that.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower.
And Libby.
You?
I just want to comment a little bit about the trash carts, if I may. The article in the Hawkeye was appreciated for the weekend. There was one error in there, and it talked about the extra cart, where you can get an extra cart beyond the initial cart if you, if you choose to do so. That is not something that you're able to mark on the mailer or indicate on the website. That will be something that you will have to go to City Hall and indicate that you are desirous of having an additional cart beyond what you end up ordering using the mailer or online. Again, I want to strongly encourage, before you select the size of your cart, to go to one of the three sites where they're available. I did hear some complaining about the carts were taken away from the library, as I understand it, the person went down there on Sunday in hopes of seeing the carts, but the carts are inside the lobby as they are at Public Works, as they are at the wastewater plant. So if you wish to see the carts, you need to be there when the office is open. And I strongly encourage people to go look at the cart, there's a two-page, a two-sided piece of information there with the carts that I think is very beneficial to consider before you make your selection. Again, people need to realize too, that the cart selected, when it's in use, that lid needs to be fully closed. We don't want snow cone carts out there with the lids partially open, they need to be fully closed, so when they consider their size, they need to be sure that they consider that. We've received between 90 and 95 calls today at the wastewater plant asking questions that were triggered most likely by the article, as well as, as well as the fact that people received a copy of what we refer to as the waste paper. I see Annie's got a copy of it, holding it up. Some of the people thought that that was the mailer, the survey form, and they couldn't figure out where they were supposed to mark it and how they were supposed to get it, so they were calling us to say, please take down my name and address and mark me down for this size cart. The mailer survey, maybe some of them arrived in the mail today. They came out, they're coming out of North Dakota, that's where the printer is. I believe they were mailed Friday, so I don't know if any arrived today in the mail, but if not today, I would expect them to be here either Tuesday or Wednesday, and you will have the opportunity to use that postage-paid postcard and indicate the cart size that you would desire, just drop it in the mail, and it'll go on its way, or you can follow instructions and get online and indicate your desired size card online.
Dawn, is that mailer a certain color? We could tell them to look for a certain color?
You know, I, they sent me a color sample on the internet, an email, and I can't, honestly, I can't, seems to me it's kind of like a dark, dark, maybe bronze or gold is the primary color.
As long as it's not green, so we can reassure them if it's green and you're freaking out, that's not it, okay.
No, no. But anyway, as I, we've told people that, well, we just as soon not take the information over the telephone, we don't want to write down 9,000 names and the addresses with information, please wait for the mailer. But by this time next week, if you haven't received it, then it might be appropriate to call us about that.
That does generate another question, though. What about the people that call in their payment? Somebody told me that they call in and they pay.
Even as I understand it, we talked with the water company, and those addresses of those properties that do pay online or receive, make payment online, still were included on the list that was provided to the mailer company.
This woman told me that she always phones hers in. She didn't even say online.
We even have, we have a resident, or a resident, we have a absent landlord that lives in Australia, that owns three or four properties. The mailer is going to Australia.
Might not get back in time, but it's going there, huh? Wow.
And one final thing is the fees that appear in the waste paper or on the website or on the mailer, those fees will replace the fee that appears currently on your water bill, they are in lieu of the fees that you have on your water bill. There seems to be a number of people out there that believe that it's on top of those fees, and that's, that is not the case, it's in place of.
Did you get, did you get that, see that email that I forwarded you? Did you see that?
Yes, I'm working on it.
Yes, I'm working on it.
Okay, all right. Well, I wasn't going to talk about tonight, but I just wanted to make sure.
He had all those calls.
He's a busy man, he's a busy man. All right. Any questions for the busy man?
No, I, I will just say, I, I thought especially the little paragraph that was featured in the Hawkeye pretty well laid it out. I mean, all the, all the questions were answered, so thank you for that.
Did you do that?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yes, she did.
She's just humble.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Don.
Chief Truxell, do you have an update on the investigation that's going on? Just timing, what to sort of expect with that?
Not really. There's, there's still a lot of moving parts. They're still doing interviews this week. They're hoping to be done with the building and some investigation part that's taking part, place in the building this week. But other than that, they are making progress. That's about all I have.
So, yeah, it's just that we are, it's still...
Takes a while.
It's, takes a decent amount of time, and it may not be that the investigation's done this week. You may still have some investigation on the building itself occurring into the next week, plus your other background investigations for some time after that. So, this, it's, it's going to have to...
People are curious.
People are going to have to be patient with this process. It does take time.
Is there, is there, Jim, I guess a question. Is there a window, once the investigation is complete, if something's done with the cleanup?
I mean, the only window that there is, that we deal with by state statute, we have a solid six months to have funds held aside to make sure that the demolition occurs properly. We've, I think that your department, Eric, has worked with the insurance company, some on that piece?
Yeah, we've had multiple conversations with them on it.
So, there is, there are, there is a set of funds, funds that are being set aside to, as a backstop for the demolition if, if the cleanup doesn't occur from the property owner. But that is a six-month window, which seems like a long time, but if you think about the process, you have someone who's having to wait for an insurance process to continue to, to unfold. Then we'll have to go through a process of deciding how are they approaching the future with that structure? They, they do want to look, at least, they've expressed a desire to, to, to rehab the, what's left there and try to build off of it into the rest of the area. And that's going to take some time for them to develop those plans and to get that cleanup done. So, it's not going to be something that we're going to see a, a final resolution in the next week or two, and I hope people can understand that. One of the things that our department downstairs, as they do get finished with the inspection phase and then move into whatever they're doing with the demo phase, if they're going to rebuild, they do have some concerns about making sure that what's done is done in a way that allows the remaining structure to be, if they are rebuilding, to stabilize it and make it to where we can be adequately assured that the streets can be open and not have worries, because we're not in a condition where that could, could be done right now.
Sure. Thank you.
The only other thing that I had, I don't know if anyone else had something, sell a PD building is still something that we're waiting on. I don't know whether that's, I mean, there are other issues outside of our structure that are part of that process that are holding up some, holding, holding that up at this point. I hope that still goes through, but we haven't had everything closed yet on that. Other than that, I don't think I had anything for tonight.
Just for the record, we hope that goes through, too, Jim. You're not alone.
No kidding. All right. I think so.
Is that all you got?
That's all I got.
All right. Do you remember what your name was in the Gus Macer?
Point guard.
Because you don't play D. All right, there's nothing else? Anybody want to take us out?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Move to second, twice. Kathleen?
McCambeau.
Yes, please.
Rinker. Sorry, Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Yes.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
To the media, adjourn, good night.
Yes, Steph.
Good job, guys. You got to mix it up.